Please.
We're ready to start.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we have one, two, three, the other four of us.
Yep, so we can start whenever you want, Patty.
I'm ready to go.
Okay, we'll call, call the meeting to order at? Six thirty-one?
Good job. Get that fancy screen up. That says what we are.
Uh, it should, he's sharing it, it should be up. I see it.
Nope. We still at standby.
Good evening, I'm Kristen Walker in tonight's.
Okay. Now we're good?
Now we're good, let's do it.
Okay.
Welcome, everybody. It was a March tenth, two thousand twenty-two Environmental Quality Commission regular meeting. Um, we were called to order at six. What was it? All right, somebody's got something on the background, please put yourself on mute.
Yeah, that's Jose, he's trying to work on that right now.
Okay. Joyce, put yourself on mute. Joe, same thing, I don't want to hear background noise. There we go, good, excellent, thank you so much, guys. Okay, um, Rob, would you call the brawl, please?
Yep, uh, Chairperson Foley.
Here.
Commissioner Bongol. Uh, Commissioner Capes is absent. Commissioner Sario.
Here.
Commissioner Trambetta.
Here.
Move two slides over there. Move a slide. Yeah. And then the next one. The pledge allegiance.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, if you can, join us. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And the Republic.
Sounds. One nation, under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Right now, you're gonna have to bring up the next slide.
Thank you so much. Okay. The next thing on our agenda. We have a little housekeeping. To do with the September, October, and the December meeting minutes, do we have any? We'll do one at a time, so it makes it easy for Rob to take the appropriate changes if we have any. So for the September ninth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting minutes. As presented, can I have a motion? And then we'll take any changes. Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve minutes as presented.
For September ninth?
Yes.
Okay, that a second?
I have a second.
Karen's seconding, Commissioner Savio, we're gonna try to be better here. And, uh, do we have any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Hi.
I, I, I. Good, unanimous. That makes it easy. Okay, we have October twenty-one. Now that was a special meeting because we had to recall it. Again, let's have a motion to get it on the floor so we can make changes if we need to. A motion as, uh, to, um, accept the minutes as presented, special meeting minutes for October twenty-one.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented for October twenty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, George, Commissioner Bongel, I need a second.
A second.
Oh. We went blank. Did we get a second? I'm sorry.
A second.
Sorry.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioner Trambetta. And do we have any changes for the special meeting minutes? Hearing none? Can we approve them as presented?
Yeah.
Everybody in favor? Signal either by waving or eye. Okie dokie, good, that's another unanimous.
All right.
And are, there we go. That's okay. Uh, and then lastly is December nine was our regular meeting, two thousand twenty-one. Now I need a motion to put him on the floor so we can pass him.
Yeah, why the Adobe is.
Go for the trifecta. Commissioner Bongel.
I make a motion to accept that December twenty twenty-one minutes.
Okay, in a second?
A second, this is.
Thank you, Commissioner Sario. Do we have any changes that need to be read in? That we're aware of? Hearing nothing? Uh, are we all in favor?
Appreciate you.
All right.
Okay, unanimous, thank you so much. So glad to get that housekeeping finally taken care of.
That's James, he's on.
You, if you look at the agenda, a couple of things I did to hopefully improve.
Next slide.
It's things that have outside links. I made the links active. So when you pull up your agenda, if you want to go and see something.
Nope, just leave it there.
Such as, um, you'll see them as we go through. You'll be able to have a hot link to either something on our own pages, something on the town website, or something somewhere that we want to take a look at. So, I think that will be helpful, uh, when you're looking at an agenda, or when we're, we're, we're here in a meeting like this. Do we have any changes that we want to make to this agenda as presented? No? Then we'll just keep going, go ahead. All right, do we have anybody in the public participation room? Rob? Anybody?
Nope, just James. Just James watching over us.
I'm part of me.
Just James watching over us.
Oh, okay. Okay, we're moving on. All right, all business. Number seven. Letter A.
Yep, stable C T.
Yeah, okay. Just saying, no real updates, they, of course, um, just FYI. Uh, if you make sure that's in the minutes, the big worksheet was updated for some items for two thousand twenty-two. Just an FYI. So if you have an old spreadsheet, it's been, there's been some current updates, which is good. Okay. We can go to the next one.
Next.
Excellent. All right, so we picked up, um, since we had our last meeting, a few more people who are, uh, signing on to our, our business Facebook page and our group page. They were a little quiet for a while, so hopefully we can, um, if you find an article, or you find something that's of interest, uh, please, um, put a link on our pages. I have done some housekeeping because certain people think they should post anything they want. Not us, but I mean, and so I have, um, put those people on post approval so that we're not getting stuff that has nothing to do with, obviously, our mission. Cool.
I have a.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a question about that.
Go ahead, Karen.
You're the admin, is there anyone else that can be the admin to, uh, make those edits as needed?
Yes, there is. Would you like to volunteer?
Sure.
Not, it really doesn't happen very often, but occasionally somebody thinks that this is a political page, and it has nothing to do with politics. We need to be thinking about our environment, our world, and our, uh, our space at Newington. So, stuff that gets to be, it's one thing if it has to do with, uh, uh, something that's going on state capital, that's fine, as long as it's about the, you know, what we're about, and not about something else. So, um, that's really important. Uh, I will make changes in the next day or so, and I'll let you know, and I'll show you what you need to do.
Thank you, thank you, yes, I, I saw something.
And I appreciate, honestly, if you could give it fifteen minutes a week. There's not much there, but trying to get, and I have a couple of ideas that might be helpful, and we can, we can talk about it offline, so we are not taking up valuable time here. But thank you, okie dokie. Okay, now, Commissioner Bongel, you're up next, letter C, upcycling contest.
Okay.
Up here where we stand, I'm very excited.
The upcycling contest starts in about a month from now, April twelfth, to be exact. And apparently, we lost the corporate sponsor, in other words, Mill Arrow, that we had last year. They donated two hundred dollars for gift cards, and this year, we're adding a third division, which is seniors. So we need three hundred dollars for gift cards. Patty Foley has agreed to be a sponsor, and she has donated a hundred dollars. So, we need to come up with two hundred dollars, and I'm thinking out of our budget, so I guess we'll have to take a vote on that.
Okay, can, um, when do you have to have the drop dead date for the sponsor?
Very soon, because it needs to be in the press release.
Okay, I understand that, but what's the drop dead date?
Um, well, I'd say it's about, um, ten days from now.
Okay, so the twenty-second, plus or minus?
Yes.
I wanted to see if I can make a phone call. And see if I can find.
Looks like Gail has a question or a comment.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
No.
Good evening, good evening, Deputy Mayor, how are you?
Good, thank you, um, I don't, just a personal observation, um, for a relatively small, um, commission and a contest that's important, but it's not. I, personally, I think a hundred dollars per prize is a lot. Why, I mean, fifty dollars, I think, would be more, because the people who are going to be doing it should be motivated by the mission and the, the purpose, and not the money prize, and I think a hundred dollars, quite frankly, is a lot, it's just a comment.
Okay. I, I appreciate your, your input on that, so if we, do you think we would be, I don't think we would be impacted that much if they were fifty dollars each?
Well, the problem I see with that is last year, it was a hundred dollars, so it would, we kind of would have mud on our face if we went back to fifty.
But there weren't, let's face it, there weren't that many.
There was fourteen, fourteen entries in total.
It's not like we're gonna be.
I expect that it will probably double this year. Just because we had fourteen last year, I expect the word to get out more, and all the people who entered last year said they would probably be entering again this year. So I think we're probably gonna have, I'm, I'm guessing twenty-five to thirty entries this year.
Which is absolutely fine, but when you go to any other fundraiser, normally it's like twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars is the prize. I, I think the primary purpose of this is the motivation and the fact to, you know, show off your skills, not to win a hundred dollars. That's just my input, but I'm not a member of the commission, so I'll just keep quiet, let it.
Now, I.
I think, I think the problem is that the two hundred dollars that Mill Arrow donated last year kind of set the bar, and we had, um, two divisions, two hundred dollars, so the math was easy, that was a hundred dollars, and like I said, I think we would have mud on our face if we come back to fifty.
All right. I appreciate that, and we can let that do, let me see if I can make a phone call and see if I can find.
But Patty, if, if, if we're going to approve this money, we've got to do that tonight. I mean, if, if they come through, if, no, I have sent two emails out to Mark Sims. If he comes through with the money, that's fine, then it doesn't have to come out of our budget. But if he doesn't, we're gonna have to approve that tonight, we can't approve it at next month's meeting, that's gonna be too late.
Um, I'm not sure if it can be approved at this meeting, I'm not one hundred percent sure.
Yeah, we have to follow the rules. Um, but we have a budget, we don't, our budget is five hundred dollars. That's within the budget right now. And how we spend that is up to us. And if, and we're gonna allocate part of that, we have a little less to spend than in the advertising that we might do. Unless we, somebody comes through in the next ten days. So, we will, uh, let me see if I can make a phone call, okay?
And if he says no, yeah, but what my question is, if, if he doesn't come through with the money, then what?
I don't know yet, how about we get a clear answer, because we don't have one? Let me give him a call.
Well, I'm trying, uh, well, I'm saying, let's vote on it.
Joyce, Joyce?
What?
We don't have an answer from him yet.
I know, but that leaves us in limbo as far as telling people what the prize money is going to be.
Not yet, you have ten days. You just told me, that's why I said what's the drop dead date.
I know, but we're not gonna have a meeting for another month, not ten days, we're not gonna have a meeting in ten days from now.
We don't have to vote on it. We already have three, three things, if you want to lower it to fifty dollars a piece, fine. If not, then.
Okay, no, that's fine, if we don't, as long as we don't have to vote on it, then I'm happy, I'm happy with that, I'll, I'll just.
All right, that's, okay. Now, what's the next thing that we have to worry about besides getting this ready, sending it out?
Okay, um, I have reserved the poster over at, um, CBS for, um, April tenth through the sixteenth, I, through Parks and Rec, that's already done.
Okay, hold on.
I have to update it up.
And I gotta write that down, I lost my pen.
I have to, um, update the posters, um, to be, um, that are gonna be put up at the businesses. I have to, um, update the QR code on the posters, the day, and then I have to get them printed. So, um, what I need to know is, can Joe, Gail, and Karen volunteer again to put posters like they did last year?
Yes, I can, Joyce, I love how you gave us a list, um, you can give me twenty, you know, that's fine, uh, everything on the Pike, um, you know, that, that works, um, and then I can easily know what I distributed it and where, and then I can let you know as well, so you can keep track.
Okay. Okay, and Joe?
Now, how many posters do you want us to distribute?
I think, um, last year you did seven, uh, five, I think last year you did five, so it would probably be the same five this year.
And like, what locations, just throughout the town?
Well, the ones you did last year, Yanni's, the Shell gas station, Italian gourmet deli, the King Donut, and Seven Eleven, unless you want more, I can give you more.
Okay, I could, I could, I could try, I could, I could ask for, I could ask a few, and, and when, when do you want us to, when does that have to be done by now?
I'll, I'll get that information out to you, but, um, yeah, if you could take three or four more, that would be good.
I'll, I'll, I'll try for a few, just, you know, just a few, I'll try.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, Gail? Gail?
Hang on, um, I can't take on anymore, but, um, if you're really stuck, I'll, I'll do what I did last year.
Okay, great. And then, uh, I've been exchanging emails with James regarding the contest and the town website, and he, he'll have the IT department, um, department do a, um, news blast, and this year about the upcycling contest, and I've got, um, drafted press releases to go out to life publication, and a rare reminder. And I have to make a few changes to the, um, online fillable, fillable application form. So, I am like eighty percent there, and it will be ready to go by, um, April twelfth.
Very good, excellent. Second time around, it's a little bit easier, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely.
Your hard work is now paying off in, in, in big dividends, thank you so very much. Um, anything more, Commissioner Bongel?
No, that's it.
Now, what was, uh, would you please repeat for me, since I found my pen? What is our date for the opening of the contest?
April twelfth.
Four twelve. With a cutoff of?
They have to have their application in by June first.
Six one.
And then the contest ends on June twelfth.
Six twelve. Perfect, just so I can mark my calendar, keep my, keep that, keep that aware, thank you so much.
And what's April twelve, what's that day for again?
April twelfth is the start of the upcycling contest.
The start of the, the start of the contest, and then the sixth, if you said the sixth is, uh, when it ends?
Six one, six one is the last day they can have their online application into me. And then June twelfth is the end of the, the contest, after that, the judging will start.
Perfect, okay, perfect, excellent, excellent. Okie dokie, wow. Really, all right, so, anything more on the upcycling contest? By anybody, any questions, anything at this point? If you do, um, and you have a question, uh, email Commissioner Bongel directly, that, that way we can, if you got a question or something that came up, please make sure you stay in touch. Very good. Our next item. There we go, yes. So, uh, a week or so ago, uh, I sent, um, we had this, the two of the seven of us had to be that industry uh, type, which kept us from receiving uh, or being able to find somebody with those qualifications. Well, when this was set up back in the eighties, uh, we didn't have a lot of what we have today within our staff of the town, and our staff of the town between fire department, and, and all the other departments that actually interact with this, um, it would be like duplicates and duplicates, and I wouldn't want to waste a lot trying to get somebody to fill out something that we don't do. So I sent a email out to the mayor, the town manager, and the town clerk requesting to get on the March nineteenth agenda. That is, so they can discuss, and then they're gonna have to, um, follow their rules to have the industry title removed from the um, definition, and just let, leave all seven as, um, as public members. Um, and we can go from there, and hopefully that will allow us to get a few more people involved. So, um, I'm waiting, I haven't heard back from the mayor, but we, I had a request that we would at least get on the March nineteenth agenda so we could run the dates necessary, um, to have this change made to, uh, we're, because we're not in the charter, we're in the ordinance. That's how we got put together, so it makes it a little bit cleaner, but we still have the steps that have to be walked through. And that's what we have, so it's in the works, I hope. Um, and hopefully we can get a few minutes on the, um, on the agenda, uh, there's a couple items that James, it, well, James, our town clerk, will write up the, um, motion so that they have it already, and it will be, um, pretty straightforward. And then we can have seven of us instead of just, um, the four of us, which would make it a little bit easier if one of us aren't here, because then we can't have a meeting, and we'll be at seven, which is an opportune, as explained to me, an opportune number of people. Um, boy, we don't want it bigger. And obviously, right now, we're stuck with four, so this is gonna give us that little bit of room. And there we go, how's that? All right. I've got next. Now, I know we had a lot of winter, um, so Commissioner Sario, did we, I don't know why there's school written after your name.
I, I can tell you that, um, I, there's no update right now with the litter pickup, and, um, I, I certainly have been thinking about that, and, um, obviously, the weather's uh, prohibitive right now, but certainly we can plan for April, and I'm sure they, um, they will be planning for April, uh, so I'll, um, I'll ask about that and follow up to confirm. And I think school is there, uh, because of Earth Day events that we had talked about posters with the school, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that down below.
Okay, okay. Any other questions about the litter pickup from anybody? Or ideas?
No, I think, I think those nice, small, uh, group events have been very nice, they're becoming interesting, and I think it's a great way that we, instead of trying to make a really big event, we have an opportunity to keep them a little bit smaller. And that needs, that no one is investing like an entire day, they're a couple hours, it's where people can actually do that, so, and it seems to be working very nice, I'm very proud of, of her, of her planning these and putting them together. Okay, perfect. All right. Next. Okay. Sammation Department, boy, does Rob have some, some big stories to tell us.
Um, so the town went out for RFP, request for proposal for, uh, vendors to, uh, give us some information on not accepting, accepting our trash, backtrack a little, I'm sure everybody knows Mira is planning to, um, decommission their burn facility, turn it into a transfer station, and their intention at this point is only to be around for about five more years. Um, I just heard this morning, just read an article that the, actually, the burn facility is slated to be running, to run for one more year. Um, they couldn't get their ducks in a row to turn it into a transfer station this year, um, so it looks like the burn facility be, will be running for one more year, and then once they figure out what they're gonna do, um, that facility will be there for at least four more years. Um, so their plan is, um, so the town got a little nervous, um, wanted something a little bit more secure, went up for an RFP, we received seven, um, seven vendors.
Now, you, you left out the fact that it's, the RFP was with two other towns.
It was a tri-town, yes, it was a tri-town, it was between Weathersfield, it was Weathersfield, Newington, and, um, It was a tri-town, yes. It was a tri-town, it was between Weathersfield, it was Weathersfield, Newington and um, and Rocky Hill.
That's exciting.
Yeah, we solicited information. We have, we all have the uh, the ability to and will, will choose our own vendor. Uh, but we all went out as a, as a tri-town RFP. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you Patty for.
Well, I just thought that was a really smart thing because trying to work together on something like a service such as this, because we all are doing garbage, it's really was a smart move. Congratulations.
Yeah, we've been spoiled with Mira because it's in our backyard and we've had such long-term contracts with them, it's, it's never been an issue. Uh, but the landscape has completely changed in the past couple of years. Um, so we ended up with uh, seven, seven quotes. Uh, three of them were, were reasonable, they, they met most of our requirements. They were uh, Murphy Road Recycling, CWPM and um, the other one escapes me, they're out of Wallingford. Um, and we did an evaluation, uh, the town did an evaluation with uh, Rocky Hill and and Weathersfield and we uh, came up with uh, two vendors. CWPM and Murphy Road Recycling, they gave us the most uh, the best terms, a four-year contract with the best prices. And now that we had a discussion at the council meeting this past week, um, we had recommended CWPM based on the fact that it was a uh, it was the lowest cost for a four-year term. Um, but the fixed, the cost for recycling was not a fixed cost for disposal, it was a variable rate which um, makes it very difficult to budget. Whereas the Murphy Road Recycling um, uh, proposal had a fixed rate for trash and for cycling. So for, for budgeting purposes, it's much easier. Um, so the, there was some discussion at the council meeting and they did not take any action at the past meeting. They wanted to think about it a little more and discuss it at the next meeting, um, and hopefully make a determination at that point.
Alright, so everybody, that meeting was held on Thursday, uh, no, excuse me, Tuesday, March eighth. It is on this, um, you can get there by going to um, uh, the NCCB, it's right up front, there it is, go to the town council meeting. You gotta scroll in a little bit, uh, which you can if you're on the OD. And you can listen to uh, the full discussion on uh, that item. Uh, because it was, you, you, you'll learn a little bit about what Ron, with Rob has to do with dealing with the ups and downs and backs and forth and it, no wonder we can't get this thing to work right. We got too many variables to have to deal with sometimes. But it is what it is.
Yeah, the, the one good, that, good thing that came of, of this though, the, the two vendors, CWPM and Murphy Road, they were significantly less expensive than, than Mira and we, we were able to get uh, prices for four years, whereas Mira's prices fluctuate from year to year. And traditionally they've gone up and they've gone up significantly each year. Um, so with this, whichever vendor we, the town chooses to go with, there will be a significant cost savings over Mira and, and in the first year alone.
Well, then we can maybe get some stuff done so we can start educating people because when I read the RFP and I saw the averages in there, um, which I, we sent the RFP out so you could get an idea of what, what's involved in just handling the garbage and the recycling in, in our town. Uh, one of the things I thought was really uh, interesting is we haven't moved, we are doing the exact same amount every year, so we really need to um, what do you call that? Sit down sometime and maybe get some ideas and put together a program to really get people to pay attention to their garbage and their recycling because it would be nice. Because we have.
I have a question.
Okay, hey, you have to raise your hand so I can see you. Okay, Commissioner Bunkel, go ahead.
If the population of, I, I don't know if the population has increased in Newington.
No.
If it has.
No.
It has, has not increased?
Not significantly.
About thirty-one thousand people. That's it. And we won't see an increase until the new places come on board. There's three, maybe four new apartment buildings. But other than that, we haven't changed in our um, population. And those apartment build, apartment buildings is just under one thousand new units. So if this one person or two people, um, so the units are studio apartments and one bedrooms. Um, I think a couple two bedrooms scattered between the, the, the three to four complexes that are being um, approved now through TPZ.
Uh, those will probably be serviced privately anyway, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't know the tonnages that they produce anyways. This is strictly, um, those tonnages are strictly um, from residential homes, condominiums that the town services or the town's.
So therefore, everybody remember, if you're in an apartment house, it's, it's covered by the people who own the apartment house.
Correct.
It doesn't, it doesn't involve the hauler or the town. They could use the same hauler, but it's not involved in the numbers we have.
That's correct, yes. Uh, the, the one good thing, the one good thing about the uh, both of them, Murphy Road and CWPM um, is part of the, the contract that will be signed with, with, with either one. Um, they are willing to uh, help the town with outreach for uh, communicating recycling and, and whatnot. So that, that'll be certainly helpful to have a big company like that to be able to help us with some outreach and help us get our recycling numbers.
Do they have any samples we could take a look at?
Uh, well, we haven't gotten to that point yet because we still haven't even picked the, the vendor yet.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, any questions? Comment?
I, I did want to comment, I wanted to say thank you for sharing the RFP, that was interesting. I didn't read the whole thing, but I did read through it um, towards the end where it did show the um, the progress that we've made or didn't make um, um, over year over year. I thought that was interesting as well as comparing with Weathersfield and, and Rocky Hill and they seem to be the same exact um, um, stagnation as we do, I guess.
Yeah, when you, when you look at the percentages, it's, it's pretty much the same. You know, there are twenty, twenty-five percent recycling rate, very similar to ours. It seems, once we went, got the single stream, it kind of stagnated and even surrounding communities are in the same boat that we are.
So I'm happy to hear about the education. I think that's a, a factor certainly that can help, so thank you.
You cannot do anything until you start teaching people, one, we don't want to have a contamination number grow, right, Rob?
Correct.
Like, because contamination means it costs us more, not less.
And it makes the commodity less valuable too.
But means we pay more and that.
Right.
Okay, that's, I'm looking at the, our down bottom line cost.
Yep.
So there's a lot, and it's funny because when I have somebody here and I would say, no, that's recycling, they're going, no, it's not, I'm going, here it is, I'll prove it to you. And they're like, oh, I didn't know that. Yeah, there is a lot of education that needs to happen if we're gonna uh, do it well. No, it would be nice to have some help. Anything else? Are we still, Rob, are we still getting rid of mattresses?
Yeah, that program, um, I don't have those numbers right in, in front of me, but those numbers have been great. I know in, in February was very slow, we only uh, recycled twenty-seven mattresses, but the weather on weekends wasn't great. We had uh, in January, we had recycled the hundred and fifty-seven mattresses which weighed into over six thousand pounds.
You gotta be loving the fact that it's not going in the garbage and it's getting recycled out.
Oh, absolutely.
And that people are actually using the service. I think that's fabulous.
Yes.
So again, another little, a little cool for, for Newington. Uh, any other news that's on the horizon that I don't want to find out about at a town council meeting?
Um, no, not, not at this point.
Perfect, buddy, okay. I appreciate you and I appreciate the fact that this was pretty nice to see an RFP that included the two other towns with, give us a chance to be a little more um, um, maybe get a better deal, uh, work together, I mean.
It's nice to see what other surrounding towns, yeah, it's nice to see what other surrounding towns are doing as well, so um, that was helpful. And I get kudos to the town managers of all, all three towns that, that got uh, got us connected, so to speak.
Excellent, that's super. Okie dokie, wait a minute. My machine wants to reboot. Not now. Jesus, it's so rude. Okay. Alrighty, um, we're ready to move on. Okay. Uh, I have nothing for the first one, that's kind of our standard in case something had come in and I have nothing for letter A. But I wanted to put this in here for everybody's, um, do we want to do the poster contest or the essay contest? I know the, the, the school poster contest, it's a matter of just updating and sending it over to the superintendent. Um, Earth Day is going to be April twenty-second, it's a, it's the same day every year. Doug calls on a different day of the week, but uh, there, the theme this year is invest in, oh. Did somebody?
My apologies Patty, I cut that off when I did the PowerPoint. It's uh, invest in our planet.
Okay, okay, we got a typo. Okay, that's fine. Invest in our planet.
Not our planet, yes.
Yeah, somebody's planet, okay. Uh, and now, do we, what is your thoughts? I would like to hear from the commissioners, thank you.
I thought we had approved this.
No.
We were going to do it in the fall, um, Commissioner Bunkel, and um, we, we didn't get to it. Um, so I, I, I would prefer not to do it, even though the point of it was Earth Day. I really, in my opinion, I would not want to conflict with the upcycle event. Uh, I would rather spread it out and, and uh, support the upcycle event so that one activity is going on at a time, even though they're different activities. Um, that's just my opinion. I would prefer to, to wait and do the similar activity in the fall of twenty twenty-two.
Alright, when do we, if you want to say the fall, give me a date, Commissioner Saria, that we can play with. Where, where are you thinking? September, October? It's just that, that I can then start speaking with the superintendent.
I will get to a date, I just have to look up um, an event that I, I believe is in October. Um, so I will get to a date, um, possibly.
And then we, I can put together a little thing we could read about it, see if there's anything. And then, then it was a matter of getting it on. If it's too early at the beginning of school, it might not be good just to consider the gearing up, but it might work well enough with the teachers to make sure that we have that. Excellent.
I think Councilor Bajeko has a question or comment.
Yeah, just to throw a date, um, just to let you know, the Waterfall Festival is resurfacing this year and it's September twenty-fourth. Um, it might be, yeah, it might be too early to have the poster contest, but it actually would be nice if we were able to display, you know, the winners or something there, but just a, just a thought.
Excellent idea. I, we don't have, we're not in possession of the past, um, posters, but we do have a lot of pictures and if we put it on a uh, some type of a scrolling screen, um, people can see that um, because Lord knows we have a tremendous group of posters that were done in the past. I photographed them all, so we do have that. And once, if the waterfall sometime in September, um, that would be, well, I, when they go back to school. Well, what happened, that's what I wanted to see, what was a couple dates, so that when I talk with um, the superintendent, we could coordinate it with whatever they might have ready and the kickoff and good stuff. Well, alright, but thank you, um, Deputy Mayor for the date of the Waterfall Festival. Anyone else? Okay, we can move on. Ooh, public participation, anybody here? Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Bajeko.
Okay, um.
I'm getting used to looking for the yellow hands now, okay. Takes a little while to get accustomed, thank you.
I um, just have a comment, actually maybe towards, for our Rob. Um, a few weeks ago, there was a walk around um, Newington Junction um, by, oh, I don't know, uh, Desegregate Connecticut and the Latino Center for um, community, whatever. But anyways, the basic purpose of the walk was for them to walk two loops around the junction and um, see possibilities for affordable housing. But in any event, there were, the two leaders were from outside Newington and most of the participants were from outside Newington. And as we were walking down Francis Avenue, um, there was a huge pile of garbage, like right on the side. And it was so noticeable by all the participants, it was kind of, um, I mean, everybody kind of noticed it and said, oh my God, look at this litter, whatever, it's a bunch of, um, it looked like Dunkin' Donuts bags and Dunkin' Donuts um, cups and um, it, it was just, you know, not that, you know, it was, well, it was a little embarrassing because, you know, here we're supposed to be showing this area it was and um, there it was. So for something, for something like that, Rob, would if, would we call you or would I call you or would a citizen call you if they see a situation like that and say, hey, there's significant litter at this particular location and can you pick it up?
Yes, yeah, we have, yeah, I'll go out there, I don't mind, but um, yeah, so it's, it is kind of embarrassing and I do apologize for that. Uh, especially when you're walking with constituents like that. But um, yeah, so we, we do get phone calls, you know, there are certain places in town, uh, like Griswoldville Road, along the guardrails where we have people that'll dump, like this morning, there were three bags dumped behind the guardrail. We went up, out there and picked them up because the neighborhood had seen them. So anytime there's anything like that roadside, yeah, the, the residents can call me or if you, they, they notify you, feel free to send me an email or call the office. And we get, we try to get those things rectified as, as quick as possible. Um, and I can, I can take, yeah, I can go down Francis, was it near the uh, the nursery? Okay.
Yeah, uh, well, it was, um, if you're, if you're coming off of Willard Avenue and taking a right onto Francis, you go down the hill and it's right past um, where that auto shop was or whatever.
Oh, yes, Carefree, the old Carefree building?
Yeah, it's, it's between there and I think um, Day Street, but it was on, it would be on your left.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You, you're welcome.
Thank you for noticing that. Okay. Um, perfect. Thank you so much. Alright, so um, pardon me, who raised your hand?
I did.
Okay, but you know, oh, there you go. Go ahead, Commissioner Bunkel.
Well, in regard to the litter pickups that Karen does, are they always in the same place? Are they always at Churchill Park or where, where are those litter pickups? Are they always in the same place?
No, they are not. Um, it, it is not done by me, I'm, I'm a participant. Um, I, I apologize, um, her name is escaping my brain right now. Um, but a uh, a, a member of, of our community has started it and continues it and uh, does it on her own. She also does uh, prizes uh, of her own. She, she doesn't want anybody to participate in doing it, she wants to do it on her own and um, is very gracious in doing that. And uh, just small gift cards she'll do as, as a raffle, whoever get, collects the, the most in weight. most in weight, and she does measure the, the weight of, of the garbage as well. Right now, she, she talked to the Parks and Rec to find out what would be the best area, and right now rotates between through three areas, between Churchill Park, Frontier Park, and Mill Pond Park.
Okay, so the ones that we're working, that is part of this little group is really within the parks. Okay. So this is in the, I just want to make a note for, for future, so.
So if anyone has any suggestions of another area, anyone, certainly I can, I can bring that to her attention.
Excellent. Okay, we have no more public participation. Commissioner, comments, anything more that you'd like to comment on before we move, go along here?
Me?
Yes, Commissioner Bunkel.
I think if we're going to have a Waterfall Festival this year.
Okay.
We should, we should start thinking about a booth that we would want to have at the festival.
Excellent. All right, I'll put that on for new business, next.
So I think maybe all the commissioners could put on the thinking caps and come up with some ideas as to what would, what would draw people into our booth, or what should we educate people about, or, you know, what, what are, what do we want to do for the booth?
Excellent. We did Deputy Mayor, I remember a couple of years ago, it's gotta be several years now, at the extravaganza.
That's what I was saying, too, at the extravaganza.
Yeah, what we did there was, we displayed the posters, because we had the poster contest, you know, for Earth Day. We, we had a big display of the posters, we also had this, a fun little game where we put things like in this plastic pool and had kids come and, you know, pick what was recyclable and what wasn't, and put them in separate piles, and then we gave them little prizes. And then we had some, you know, I think maps or displays of, you know, big, big posters, not, not heavy-duty reading, but big posters on, on the environment and you know, the focus was litter and recycling, so there's a lot you can do there, but we wanted to get, it was, we didn't, I mean, the, the, a lot of parents came to look at their children's posters, I mean, that's a big draw, because everybody bring the family and their aunts and uncles and grandma and grandpa. But also the interaction, you know, so it wasn't just displaying written, you know, dull posters. There was something to do, but also something personal to see.
I do remember that, and that was actually quite well done. Alrighty. I don't see any more hands, so that Rob, anything more that we should be aware of that's up, upcoming coming?
Uh, no, no, nothing at all, hopefully Council can make, make a decision in the next council meeting, and we can move forward with the new facility, save the town some money.
That would be nice, we always like to put a few bucks back in the coffers.
Yes.
Congratulations, hopefully this will this ever-changing landscape of how to get rid of garbage and recyclables with the Mira plant closing is I'm sure upsetting all one hundred and sixty-nine towns, because it's gotta affect not everybody.
Right, but yeah, it is, it's made things challenging for, for some municipalities here.
Okey dokey. Oh, there we are, thank you, Commissioner Sario, please go.
Thank you, thank you, I'm getting used to the hand as well.
Yeah, we're all becoming such experts.
Thank you, thank you both, I, I did look up some options in October. The first Wednesday in October is Energy Efficiency Day.
Ooh.
I, I think that might be too soon, though, I don't know, the first Wednesday in October, I think that was the day we were going to do in twenty twenty-one. And then another option is October twenty-fourth, which is an International Day of Climate Action. Either, either one, we could, we could just propose the theme, this is, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily, we could propose the theme for, for the poster or essay. So does any of those dates seem appealing to, to the group, to the commission?
We'll put it together, I'll put it together with the information that we have from the last year, so everybody could read and, great. So I'll dig that all that out, and then we can, because we want to invest in our planet. Now we, how do we invest in Newington? And with, with energy and cleaning stuff and go from there.
I have, I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Bunkel.
So, is this going to be an essay contest and a poster contest?
They were two separate. I'm not sure I understand your question.
Are we having an essay contest and a poster contest?
Well, we're going to look, re, talk about it next, next month, with, once I can send out what we have, so we can wordsmith or do whatever we want to do, plug all our numbers and go forward. Because the essay contest was for the older kids. The poster contest was for the younger kids. And then, once, once it's laid out, then you, you can go to town on it, okay?
Okay.
Perfect, thank you so very much. Let's see, and Deputy Mayor Brageco, any, any other, any other thoughts, we really appreciate that you're here tonight. I know Commissioner, Town Councilor Paige wanted to be here, he was here just shortly. But his son was in a concert tonight, and I told him he should be with his family. And then I would be glad to catch up with him personally, so that we can get him up to speed. But you know, your kid's only in a concert once a year or so, so it would be nice to be present for that, but, so we're here, but go ahead, Deputy Mayor Brageco.
I'm, I'm, I'm done, I'm out, I'm spent.
Good, I know the feeling, okay, so we expect our next meeting. I was going well. Excuse me, April fourteenth, six-thirty, we'll take a Zoom meeting at that point. And the only reason I'm doing that is because we do have a new member, but, Rob, the email address bounced.
Yes, I found that out and I sent her a separate email.
Okay, all right, so I haven't, I'm going to have to reach out to her, but we do have a number five to our board, and hopefully we'll have the other two seats, and then we can go from there. But it will be a Zoom, unless I'm clear to actually be allowed to be out in about we're, we're, got fingers crossed, we're cautiously optimistic, we're going to get some really good news. We'll all celebrate then. Yay. Well, I guess if you have nothing else, then I have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Thank you, Commissioner Bunkel, do I have a second?
I can do it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Tramdata, are we all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and we'll be back to you with a few more items. So we can start doing a little reading about the, in the fall, and put together a nice big contest and, and, and work on that with, and then, everybody, let's focus on with Commissioner Bunkel, so that we have a great upcycling contest, fantastic. I want to say goodnight, and thank you very much, enjoy.
Hi, everyone.
Good night, take care.
Good night, thank you. Okay.